Meeting to order. Body online that needs to be online. Alright, so it's five thirty, so we're gonna get started. Call it to order. I'll proceed with asking our board member Tim Weisire to present us with an invocation for this meeting. Mr. Weishire, you have the floor.
Um, I, I'm gonna go ahead and take over for Mr. Weisire if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, it's okay with me. Ms. Castillo, please proceed.
Thank you. Dear Lord, we'd like to thank you for keeping us safe during this very difficult time and for showing us how our community has risen above and beyond to honor our educators and to rally around our students and our community. We are so grateful for all of the amazing people in our community, and we ask that you continue to guide us in this time and beyond in order for us to continue to support our community. And so it is, amen.
Thank you, Terry. And next we'll follow with our pledge of allegiance. Dr. Pace, if you would please lead us.
Would everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Our mission statement is to inspire all learners to reach their highest potential as responsible productive citizens. And with that, we will proceed to positive comments from the board and the superintendent. I will begin with District One School Board Member, Ms. Terry Castillo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to recognize all of our educators during this week of Teacher Appreciation Week. I know that everybody's going beyond, above and beyond, not only to show their support, but also our educators have gone above and beyond during this time for our students. I specifically want to recognize two educators. One from Thacker Elementary, Mrs. Yara de la Fuentes, who is the outgoing principal, and Eugenia Rolando, principal at Kissimmee Middle School. They have been going around our town and spreading the love for our students, specifically for Christopher, who is one of our, our students, and we just wanna thank them personally from the bottom of our hearts. They're doing so great, and all of the little things that they're doing is being noticed, and we are so happy and grateful to have you on our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next would be District Two Board Member, which is me, Calvin Soto. I, um, don't really have anything to say right now. Positive, because it's a lot of things that are going on well, and I hope that, you know, we keep on improving with our distance learning and with our planning concerning what's coming next with our, with our school district and our students. And so I do appreciate the efforts and the results that we've been getting so far from the district, and I, and I wish I hope that we continue this trend of improvement. Uh, next, I will call on our District Three Board Member, Tim Weisire.
Thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. I think you were muted before.
No, I was having audio issues with my device, but, um, thank you. I have no additional public comments and just speak in favor of what both you and Ms. Castillo already shared.
Thank you, Mr. Weisire. I will call on next on our District Four School Board Member, Mr. Clarence Thacker.
I just echo Mr. Weisire's comments. I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Mr. Thacker. And finally, our District Five School Board Member, uh, the illustrious Ricky Booth.
Thank you, Chairman Soto. Yeah, I just would say, uh, you know, encourage the community. Our teachers this week. They are working really hard, and we appreciate everything they're doing. Also, I wanna give a shout out to Coach Mendrup, the softball coach over at Harmony High School. She and her softball players put together a kind of a drive-by, right term or not, but, uh, we went to each of the, there was three seniors on the softball team, and we went to each of their houses the other night and cars around their houses and, um, you know, maintaining social distance and all that. But it, but you could tell that the, the kids and their families really enjoyed it. So I wanted to say Coach Mendrup and her team for putting that together.
Thank you for sharing that with us, Mr. Booth. And I will now call on Dr. Pace, our superintendent, for positive comments.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Soto. I do wanna say a tremendous thank you to our community for the level of engagement that we have in Teacher Appreciation Week. Just this last week, we mailed to all of our teachers this lovely window clean, which I know you can't see well from the screen, but it says, "This Osceola School District teacher makes a difference in the lives of students, no matter the distance." And so we hope to see those soon on a lot of door windows and car windows so that we can celebrate our teachers throughout the community and appreciate all of your support in doing that. I also have been reporting to the board, our average daily attendance with digital learning. We're still around ninety-three and a half percent on a consistent basis, but I wanted to tell you that we're down now to just six hundred and two students that we've not been able to find and have some contact with over the course of the last five weeks. We are not stopping now. We have three and a half weeks left of school to reach out to all of our community, give kids a chance to catch up who may have fallen a little behind. Do wanna continue to remind kids and parents and teachers that learning never stops in SDOC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. And when we put this into perspective, the student population, the conditions that we're all facing, the suddenness, six hundred students, which is like one percent. It's a remarkable, remarkable achievement on its own. And as the superintendent just stated, that's not where we're stopping. We're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to find all of those students and assist them wherever they are, whatever they need in order for them to continue their learning. Thank you, Dr. Pace, for that update. And, um, that brings us to the next, um, part of our agenda, which is appointments and transfer. And, Dr. Pace, this is also, um, one of your items.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Soto. I'm excited tonight to get to complete two additional school teams for administrators for the upcoming school year. First board under item two point oh one. I'm recommending the approval of Mr. Demetrius Harris to become an Assistant Principal at Gateway High School. Mr. Harris has been a teacher at Excel Alternative School in Orlando, a teacher and a Dean of Students at Celebration High, and also the Learning Resource Specialist at Celebration High School. He received his bachelor's degree in computer information systems from DeVry University and a master's degree in educational leadership from and Mr. Harris and his compadre tonight ended up having like four separate interviews. So I did have to apologize last Friday afternoon at two o'clock when I said, I wanna interview again, and they both come on suits and tie. So I think they're eager to take on the job, and I'm sure they're gonna lead with confidence and professionalism. So I'm pleased to recommend again, Mr. Demetrius Harris, to become Assistant Principal at Gateway High School effective June first, two thousand twenty.
Motion.
Motion for approval.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Thacker and a second by Mr. Booth. Anything further? Hearing, seeing no hands. Seeing no hands. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
And I registered five ayes. Vote passes five zero. Congratulations, sir.
Next, Mr. Soto, we have item two point oh two. Approval of the administrative appointment for the Assistant Principal at Tacopacoliga High School, Mr. Roberto Morales. Mr. Morales has been a literacy coach and a high school ELA resource teacher for the school district in Osceola County, as well as an academic dean of students and assistant principal for curriculum instruction at Lake Marion Creek Middle School in Orange County. He has three master's degrees, one in elementary education from Mercy College, another in reading from East Stroudsburg University, and the last one being in educational leadership from the American College of Education. I am confident that Mr. Morales will do a great job joining the team of Mr. Phelps at Tacopacoliga High School, supporting those Tigers, and his appointment would be effective June one, two thousand twenty. Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, so I have a motion to approve by the other second, by Mr. Clarence Thacker. Call to the vote. I wanna get my master's degree in reading. Read a lot. I'll take a vote at this time. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Vote passes five zeros at register. Congratulations, sir. Final reader. Miss, Dr. Pace, anything else?
No, sir. That's all I had.
Alright, so that takes us to the next section of our agenda, which is public comments. Before we begin, I wanna go ahead and say a few things about this. And we are taking a different format. What we normally do with public comments is that we invite the public to, to come onto a podium and present themselves and rest the board. A lot of them, a lot, it's been my experience, and I have witnessed people speak off the cuff. Others come with prepared statements. Others come with group. We have, um, we're very, very flexible to allow people to be able to express themselves to the board and be persuasive or informative or whatever their hearts desire. And the board has always, at least during my tenure, has always paid attention and not just heard, but listened. But with this new format, we have to determine how we want to go, we wanna give that voice to the public. And what I want to do is, for the future, I would like to, for the district, to try to explore about having these folks, um, have it, have a way to log in and appear on video in order to make that, um, that expression and provide us with their comments for us to hear and consider. What we have right now is that we've been taking written, statements from the public via text or several different modes, but they're all just read. I don't think that we have received any video that we could play of them reading, you know, making their statements for three minutes, which is the maximum that we allow. So what we have right now is, is just text. And while I've discussed this with several other, you know, um, folks at the district, I do not agree, and I do not, I do not wanna set a standard where we are going to be reading for three minutes every letter that is submitted. And the reason is, is because the great, the great part of the public comment is that interaction of the person being able to express themselves when they are talking to us and giving us that eye contact. And I don't believe that reading from a letter, you know, that is lost. What is not lost, of course, is the comment itself. So what I'm going to, what I decided is that we are going to take the public comments that have been submitted by the written form, and, and here, I, I'm willing to listen to some suggestion. I think it'll work better if it goes attached to the minutes as a public record, as a, as a permanent record of the, of the school board meeting, where it could be in its entirety. And like I said, I already mentioned the, the reasons for it. There's also advantages to doing that. If something is read, once the three minutes are up, the rest of the letter or the comment is not read, and it gets lost. I would rather have it permanently made part of the minutes where it can be studied and read by the school board and any other person that would be interested. And I believe, I'm gonna ask right now, how many, if someone could tell me how many, um, letters were submitted to us? Do we know?
Ten emails, sir.
Good.
Related to the Osceola renewal of FLCCA.
So if, um, where would those be available so that we could look at them?
Tonya can't attach them to the, to the minutes, as you indicated, sir. We, we don't have a dot cam or anything like that to display them on the screen tonight.
That's fine. Those are all pertaining to an item that is coming up for, um, on the board for a vote. Am I correct about this?
Correct. It's item eleven point oh one.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is, before that item, when the item comes up, I want those, if you could just email them to the board, 'cause I wanna go ahead and pause the meeting so that the board can look at those documents and consider them. Okay?
Yes, sir. We'll take care of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Yes, Mr. Booth, you're recognized.
Same, Dr. Pace, you may know, are these the same emails that we all received as a board? Are they additional to, to that? Because I've received about ten emails that I've went over today. Several days I've received some emails. Are these the same ones that, that are, that have been submitted for public comment as well?
Several of them are ones that were previously emailed to all five board members, as well as to me and Mr. Kruppenbacher. Some of them were just sent to the public comments address on the board agenda.
Okay. So, Mr. Booth, to play it safe, board, we'll go ahead and, because those are the ones that are being put in as public comments. If you could put them together into an email so that we may have, I will go ahead and pause. This is an important item for many people. I will pause the meeting prior to eleven point zero one so that the, so that board members can go ahead and read through them and consider them in their, in, and just, you know, take note and the consideration of the vote. Ms. Castillo, I recognize your, you're, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so that I understand, your suggestion is that instead of reading the public comments, we just compile them into an email, which we will have a chance to read privately as a board before we take a vote on item eleven point oh one. Is that correct?
Correct, with the addition that they also become part of the minutes. Correct.
So they'll become part of the, the minutes for the meeting.
Absolutely. Just like they would be recorded if somebody came in person and, and spoke those words.
For transparency purposes, you would be reading them individually, not with each other.
No, of course, we're, we're not even
I know, I just don't want anybody to misinterpret it.
However, I mean, if we had them in public comments, we would all order them at the same time.
Look, Frank, the way I look at it is that, you know, when the item comes up for deliberation, any board member can refer to those, you know, and, and address it or, or advance whatever they feel they want to advance. That's what an open sunshine meeting means.
Mr. Chairman.
It's funny, but I do see Mr. Thacker's hand up.
I'm just, um, I'm, I'm a little confused on what we're doing. I, I don't have a problem with getting them all together in an email, but are we, I mean, it's fine that the five of us can, can read their comments, and I'm assuming there's other people watching this meeting. They will not have the benefit of seeing or having those comments, since we're not gonna read any of them. Is that true?
Well, because
Understanding this, and does that make sense?
Actually, both things. You, you are understanding, and, and, and what you said makes sense. So what happens is that we're gonna be able to see them. They are part of the record, but they're not gonna be contemporaneously seen by anyone else unless they are part of the email as well. Okay, and to me, I would, I definitely do not object to these things being emailed to everyone that is in attendance. That's not, that's not, um, there's no really, there's no real reason why this cannot be emailed to everyone. The fact, the fact that it isn't, it's not a, it's not a, um, a desired feature. It's just a consequence of limitations that we have due to COVID and the way that we have to manage these meetings.
Okay.
Is there, is there, um, any other hands? So, moving agenda modifications at this time. And I'll go with District One. Do you have any modifications, Ms. Castillo?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any modifications, but I do wanna make you aware that I will be abstaining from item twelve. And I filed the proper forms as well already.
So noted. Thank you, Ms. Castillo.
Thank you.
So on modifications, District Two does not have any. District Three, Mr. Weisire?
Sir, I'm good.
District Four, Mr. Thacker, do you have a modification?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, um, District Five, Mr. Booth, any modifications?
I don't have any modifications, but I, I would just like to comment on the, on the public comment. I just, I do wanna make sure we are legal on what we do. When we don't read them or individually, we don't read them into the record publicly, I wanna make sure that, that, uh, that, that, that we're doing the right thing here. I, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Soto, but I certainly wanna make sure we're, you know, we're following all.
Okay, so look, I asked for the hands, and I guess something happened in your end, and that's why.
I apologize. I was waiting, waiting on everyone else, and we moved on, so I apologize about that. But I, you know, I guess I would, if I could hear from, from Barker, maybe.
Yes, that's fine, Mr. Booth. We haven't gotten that far along. Let me go ahead and finish on the modification. No need, sir. Let me finish on the modification, and, and then we'll go ahead and discuss this further. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modifications associated in items twelve?
So moved.
Thacker in a second by Mr. Booth to approve the, um, the consent agenda with, with said modifications. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Right, so the vote, I registered five. The vote passes five zero. We're gonna backtrack just a little before we go into the, into the, um, to the rest of the agenda and, um, and address, um, Mr. Booth, I believe, and, and I believe that you just wanted to hear a legal opinion as to the process that I adopted. Is that correct?
Yeah, just some clarification that it's all, um, watered.
Alright, very well. So before
If we could speak to that.
Before I hand it
Disagree with, with, uh, with your process. I just wanna make sure we're good.
Alright, so before I do that, because it was my decision, this is something that I have already been brainstorming and had some, um, you know, really good discussion with the superintendent and lively discussion with the board attorney, with Mr. Kruppenbacher. It is, it is usually when you're facing some unprecedented, when there is, to use the word novel here, that you have to try to, you know, figure out what is the spirit of whatever rule we're following. What is it that we really want to accomplish? And, and, um, and, you know, we haven't had an epidemic before. So it's kind of like, you know, we have to sometimes try to do our best to accommodate what I said is the spirit. The spirit here is people being heard and being considered. And, um, and, and that's really what guided my decision. With that said, I'll go ahead and, and have Mr. Kruppenbacher respond to your inquiry, and I'll give you the floor, Frank.
Yes, uh, members of the board, we are in uncharted territory. I can't tell you it's legal or not legal. Uh, everybody is grappling with this across the state. So when I look at the chairman's proposed action, people have submitted comments for the purpose of providing their thoughts, information, concerns, et cetera, to the board members. And those comments are public records. So we are fulfilling the responsibility of having the information provided to you and available for the public should they ask for the minutes or records. And so it's reasonable to argue that you are continuing to provide the public the opportunity to express their issues and concerns and not denying them that access. If anything, one would argue, but I don't know that there's a legal right to this, that they're simply not provided the access to broadcast their opinion. But in reality, there are lots of boards across the state that don't have things online, don't have things being TV in, during the, when we're not in the epidemic. So if you're not in the room, you're not hearing it in those cases. So I think one can reasonably defend the argument. Now, if you wanna go to the most out, you know, further step out, you'd read everything, but you don't limit it to three minutes. But I think you can reasonably argue that this approach does give the public access and transparency to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Kruppenbacher. And board, um, Dr. Pace, I do want to, you know, explore ideas to make, to, you know, to, to improve on this. Um, one of them is, of course, that folks can go ahead and record a three-minute video. I, I don't know if I would approve that still, but, um, it does, it's worth to explore. Um, but I think that the most important parts of Mr. Kruppenbacher said is that the public be heard and that their comments, hopefully with the, with the, with this, with the hope and the spirit and, and reasonable expectation that their comments are considered in whatever concern they have with this business of the school board. And I believe that what we're doing forward here, Mr. Booth, I believe that in my heart, it does do that. Um, I certainly will be reading those, those, um, those comments and those concerns prior to the item being, um, brought up for any vote. Ms. Castillo, I'll take your last one.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add on one thing to? One of the concerns about reading was that if somebody wrote you a long document and you stopped at three minutes, which is the rule, the whole intent or meaning of what was written may not be understood 'cause you don't have the benefit of what's after, what you cut off versus if they were here in person, standing up and talking, they can adjust their comments to hit their main points, et cetera. So full letters give you everything.
And I mentioned that this is, is very powerful, Frank, and I think that because you're an attorney as myself, you know, it's very powerful to do that presentation. And, and, and I have, just like other board members have, we've seen it happen when a community comes and they, and we give them the time and we see what's going on. That power is not replicated by having the superintendent or any other staff just very blandly and neutrally read a letter and then probably not even get to the end. And, um, so that, that was my decision. I'll take final comments, and then we're gonna be moving on. Ms. Castillo, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you so much for recognizing me, Mr. Chair. So in this particular case, I wanna say that I'm a little bit more flexible with reading the public comments on my own, specifically because of what board member Booth has already mentioned. We have most of the comments already. We, we've received them throughout the week, and I'm perfectly comfortable with, um, reading the rest of them. However, I, I would, um, like us as a board in the future. I don't know that I'm comfortable with not having public comments, even if we are in this, in this particular, um, type of meeting, because it's not, it's not just about legality for me. It's also about accountability and, and ensuring that our public knows that we are here to listen. So if we can find a way to be a little bit more flexible with these comments, what, and this is, definitely does not have to be today, but in the future, I, I would feel more comfortable if we are able to read public comments into the record. If we need to advise the public that they can only, uh, give us three minutes worth of stuff, then that's, I'm okay with that. But I do think that the public does want us to, to read those into the record as the meetings are happening. So I just wanted to go on the record saying that.
And, Mr. Booth?
Yeah. I would say as the, if the, um, the submitted comments are going to be attached to a public document that anyone from the public can go in to and read, that is correct, right?
Correct.
The minutes, which is not necessarily what we do with, in, in the, uh, in a, a real meeting, the, the old style meeting, a live meeting, we would just keep the sheet, um, in, in the public record, correct? Am I, am I correct?
Correct. People would have, people would have to look at the video in order to even see. So in a way, this, this actually, as far as a record, is superior to what we used to do before, correct?
Yeah. One more comment. I can think, I can actually think of a lot of things that can happen if we continue One more comment. I can think I can actually think of a lot of bad things that can happen if we continue superintendent read public comments. I can think of some, you know, I can some well, I won't want to go there, but there could be some some bad things that come about by having a superintendent or the board secretary sit and read a comments that certainly some nefarious actors out there that could use that to their advantage somehow, just just for fun and games. And certainly, I want to prevent that as
You are correct, because once you open that forum, it's open. You don't get to pick and choose on that issue.
Mr. Booth.
Was submitting, having the letter submitted as part of the minutes, I want to make sure that they're easily accessible by the public. If they're part of the minutes, I'm assuming they are.
They are. And to and to finally, Ms. Castillo's concern that lost upon me, I I am of the opinion that reading it does not really address them appropriately. I believe, though, that if we can figure out a way through our, you know, WebEx platform for someone to appear, you know, on camera and make a public statement, and we could arrange that prior, that would be my preferred, that would be preferred. And I hope that the technology would allow us. Board, with your permission and 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 if I see another hand, I'll stop, but I really want to move forward at this point. Okay, very well. Mr. Booth, Castillo and Mr. Mr. Krupenbacher. I think that this was a very good discussion in the open so that it could explain why we are what we're doing is very, very important portion of of our board meetings. So having already approved the consent agenda and looking at the at the board agenda, this takes us to item number 10, which is an information on operational audit report. Dr. Pace, is there something about this that the district wants to announce?
No, sir. Just we wanted to make sure that we shared this with the board and with the public, and we do have an audit advisory advisory board meeting as well to review the findings and the recommendations from it with them.
Excellent. So this brings us to item number 11, which is the of of which we will be considering 11.01. I did not see all those emails that everybody was talking about. So these public comments to me are important. I am going to just I'm going to recess, but not turn off. Nobody goes anywhere, okay? Were those superintendent, were those emailed to us to our school board email address?
Yes.
All right, so if you will permit me, I will I would like 10 minutes and I will call back the meeting at that time.
And just so you know, Chair, they're they're pretty form emails, so they're all pretty much the same. So just so you know, when you pull them together, you'll see it's all very formulaic.
I did not get any.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Can I reset or check where it went? Because it's not in my inbox.
Checking now, Mr. Thacker.
It just came in.
So I'll I'll call on on discussion on this item at 18 oh, 1812. Anybody needs more time, we could do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For those non military people, is 1812? Six 12?
Sorry, six six 12 P M.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so as I have stated, I'm reconvening this meeting is six twelve. And I hope that everyone had an opportunity to read. I definitely had plenty of time and some time left over to read the comments. And if anybody else needs more time, just please just put the hand up and. I see Mr. Weisire, Mr. Weisire, do you need more time with those?
I don't, I just have a comment to make and I'm prepared to make a motion on the item.
Okay, very well, so we're gonna go ahead and take the comments and everything else. Now, I just want to make sure that everybody's, I want to make sure that the public comments were read or that the board doesn't need any more time with them. Ms. Castillo?
I just want to make sure you know I have discussion.
Oh, excellent, so, all right, so it looks like we're in the discussion phase. So before, if I can ask, and I'm gonna go ahead and be as fair and transparent to this process, I'm gonna make a statement and then we'll go ahead and hand it over to the board for consideration. As I, and I, and this is dialogue between me and the superintendent. So the reason Dr. Pace, the reason that this item is once again before the board for consideration is A, is a different, is a different proposal than previously. And B, it's from, just from looking at the agenda, I do not see, I see that it's up to the board for consideration, but I do not see the, the district's position as to whether they're neutral or whether, or what they, um, what, what is the recommendation? So I'm gonna go ahead and have Dr. Pace and then we'll start with everything else, okay? Dr. Pace?
Yes, Chairman Soto, the recommended action is approval of the conditional charter agreement renewal for Florida Cyber Academy. It is a one-year renewal. It would take them through the 2021 school year and it is conditional upon the conditions outlined in the appendix to the agreement. And my assurances within the item is that, you know, we will have staff regularly monitoring and supporting Florida Cyber Academy and meeting the goals that we've laid out before them in that appendix.
All right, so if I might understand that, I understand the due diligence from the district and your responsibilities as far as what, what the board should do is you're neutral and leaving it up to them? Or is there something that you want, do you want to advocate for this item?
My recommendation is approval of the conditional charter agreement as it is presented, a one-year term.
If there, is there anything further, Dr. Pace?
No, sir.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. All right, so that's, that answers what I did to have on the record before we go ahead and make a a, any discussion or motions of any type.
Chairman?
I see, I see Mr. Weisire's hands are up, go ahead.
Thank you, I'd make a motion to approve item eleven point zero one and like to offer some comment as well.
Very well, I will go ahead and before I call for a second, ask that you make your comments at this time.
My comment was actually just a clarification as I opened, the latest information was sent to me in the public comment. I did recognize that there were additional emails that I had not seen yet, and so they were not form- formulaic. They were specific to some of the unique circumstances related to a child or a family, and so I just want to correct myself on that.
Okay, very well, the reason, board, the reason I'm asking for comments before a second is just because of the history that this item has had. And the fact that I am recognizing that board members really wanted information and they wanted to make a very informed decision on it. So I'm just, I'm just respecting that. I believe previously there was some, Dr. Pace, I do have a question now. And this refers to, you know, the substance of this. The district, do we, do we have any competing type of program with Florida Cyber is offering? Choice programs, I mean.
Yes, Chairman Soto, Osceola Virtual School has two components. One is a six-twelve component that offers services through Florida Virtual Schools curriculum to students in grade six through twelve. And then we also have a smaller unit in the Osceola Virtual School Program that uses the same curriculum K-12 and serves a small number of students in grades K through twelve under the direction of Principal Mr. Hodges.
Okay, what, what benefits that you can, that you have identified would a student have in using Florida Cyber over our Florida Virtual?
I think you mean over our Osceola Virtual.
Osceola Virtual, I'm sorry.
Florida Cyber does have presence throughout the state in terms of able to provide some support for testing and student groups and those types of things. We restrict our Osceola Virtual School not to enrollment only within the district, but primarily are only able to have services here within the district in terms of any face-to-face tutoring meetings or testing that needs to occur. So I think that's the primary difference from the way we serve Osceola Virtual Schools with the K-12 program and with what Florida Cyber does in this regard is that they have a larger organization and have more resources across the state to meet students' needs from, from other areas. As you could see from many of the parent comments, parents like the flexibility. They like the smaller environment. Some students feel intimidated in a larger campus traditional setting and, and that's what has called them to this particular program. As you could see in the recommendation, based on the challenges that Florida Cyber has experienced in particularly providing rich and accelerated programs for their high school students as well as then achieving a strong graduation rate, they would be resorting back to a strictly K-eight program and limited to enrollment to one thousand and thirty-seven students as opposed to the growth that they had previously projected. To allow them an opportunity to, to formulate a strong plan of improvement and, and serve the students that they currently have enrolled in the program with excellence next year with the support of Dr. Rafalski and our Executive Director of Charter and Choice and her office.
It seems as though this, this charter operator is going to be relying on our, you know, quite extensively on our resources, our guidance and our consulting, is that correct?
Certainly, Dr. Rafalski will have a strong presence in working with the team, just as she supports all of our charters. But one of the things that the board had indicated that they felt like was going to be very important was some very strategic monitoring and support throughout the year so that a year from now, we're not in a similar position of having significant concerns about student performance in this program.
What has been the student performance up to date that caused concern?
Well, while they were able to improve their grade to a C last year, I did outline specifically in the agenda item the areas of concern that we had, particularly student achievement declines in math and science with levels significantly below district and state averages in every category. In addition, not meeting satisfactory student performance objectives, concerns with ELA proficiency, predictions based on the NWEA map, also had concerns in terms of student declines. As I've mentioned before, acceleration was a significant concern and was going to be zero for the current school year, and that's a component in the high school grading formula. But we've discussed all of those with Florida Cyber, we've left, listed them very specifically within the agenda item for the board and, and the public to review if necessary, but more importantly, to outline the things that we want to see improve before next spring.
All right, and I think if, just remind me, how long has Florida Cyber been operating in those economy? What's the first year that we approved this charter?
Chairman Soto, I apologize, back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen, okay. So they've been operating for at least four years.
Five, they have five full years of enrollment, twenty twenty-one was a sixth year. I'm sorry, nineteen twenty was a sixth year.
Dr. Pace, thank you very much for your, for clarifying and answering my questions. I don't have anything further. I'm gonna go now back to the board. I see Mr. Weisire is the only one with his hands up, so back to you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm good, you know, as mentioned, I've made a motion to approve this item based on the recommendation of the superintendent. I was also one of the board members that had some concerns with it previously. I've had subsequent conversations with the superintendent after our last school board meeting. I believe we should go forward with approval of this charter agreement for the extension of one year. And I know that I have complete confidence in the superintendent and our staff to continue to work through the monitoring and the performance concerns that were outlined. Would ask the board to support moving forward with this.
All right, so I see hands, Ms. Castillo, I recognize you.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Chairman. My questions were actually answered by Dr. Pace, thank you so much for detailing why you are in support of moving forward with a one-year renewal for this charter school. I do want to put into the record that I have been concerned about this specific charter school, but I have spoken extensively with Dr. Pace and I share Mr. Weisire's opinion about having full confidence in our staff to ensure that this charter school is successful next year, specifically because they have, we have asked them to make some very specific changes to their student body in order to allow them to be successful. So at this point, I would be voting in favor and, yeah, that's it.
You make, are you seconding?
I would make a second, I would second Mr. Weisire's motion.
Very well, thank you, Ms. Castillo. I'm gonna pause to see hands. All right, so it seems as though the board has no further concerns or questions on this item. I'm gonna go and put it to a vote. There's a motion to approve by Mr. Weisire, a second by Ms. Castillo for the recommendation as, as presented on the board agenda and packet. I'll call for a vote, and all those in favor, please state aye, aye? All those against, vote no? But then I registered five votes aye, the, the item is approved with a vote of five zero. Brings us to item eleven point zero two.
Motion to approve. Item eleven point oh two.
I did hear a motion to approve, is there a second?
Okay.
Very well, by Mr. Weisire, any further discussion on this item? Ms. Castillo, you do have your hand up, but.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, that was for the previous item.
Figured as much, just wanted to make sure. Then a vote, all those in favor, please state aye, aye? And I believe I've registered five votes aye, five zero for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve of twelve point zero three.
And before we move to a second on that, do we need to take that individually? This is twelve oh one is the extension. Okay, then I will second the motion made by Mr. Thacker.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Thacker and a second by Weisire to approve twelve point zero three. Without, is there any discussion, I'm looking, I'm looking for hands, I see none. Therefore, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, please state aye, aye? Three is approved, vote of, or see. Let's go to the.
Mr. Chairman, that was four zero with one abstention, correct?
Yes, let me be clear, that's four zero with District One abstention. Correct, thank you, Mr. Weisire.
What, what was the, can I ask what the purpose of the extension was?
Yes, sir, you may.
May I answer, Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Mr. Thacker, I work for Spectrum Charter Communications, yes.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I wasn't sure which one the conflict was. Okay, yeah, yeah.
So that brings us then to item number thirteen, which is regular facilities. There are several, several thing, however, emotion for thirteen point oh four encompasses. Do I, do I hear anything on that?
I'll make a motion to approve item thirteen point oh four.
Motion to approve by, by Mr. Weisire on thirteen point zero four. I'll wait for hands for discussions or questions or anything. Vote all in favor, please state aye, aye? And I registered five votes in favor, therefore, approve five zero. Takes us to item fourteen, which is attorney's report, and Mr. Grubenbacher, you have the floor.
Yes, just two things I'd like to express. One, it just so happens that this pandemic hit as we were going into a number of very important, complex legal issues, legal issues for the district. And I just want to publicly tell the board how impressed I've been with Dr. Pace and her staff's professionalism. One observation I can tell you, I continue to really been around doing this a long time. They really fulfill what this board directs in terms of what's best for the students, the families and the employees, and that is coming out in every complex meeting. It's unstated, but you see it when issues are raised. And so I'm just telling the board that your staff is, is just doing a great job of fulfilling mission and the things that you've asked for. And then I would only publicly thank one other person, and that's Ruben, because he's got me where I actually can function at these meetings. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate him. He has to come over before the meeting because I press buttons and screw up what he does, and then he comes back and fixes it. So thank you, that's it.
Your pager is working fine, your people?
Well, Mr. Grubenbacher, really appreciate your recognition of the staff and, and of course, our superintendent. But I'm going to also commend you, I think that you also have a, a difficult tasks and I think that you're handling things well and things have to be handled on the fly. And I have no problem, I hope that the rest of the board reaching you to, to seek your, your wisdom and your advice and how we're carrying along with things.
That is super.
And I appreciate, and I really do appreciate your efforts. This is of course a reflection of your professionalism, but also of your humanity. You've walked this earth for a long time and you bring, you bring a lot of things that are not in the law books to help us through this, and I really appreciate that.
Well, board, I will tell you without blowing smoke that you should be proud because I sit on calls and emails with government lawyers, and you guys are always driving complete transparency. And I'm seeing these emails about commissioners who want to use the pandemic to get things done, but they don't have to really be public, et cetera. So it's just nice to have a board so committed to doing it right, and you should be proud of yourselves for that.
Thank you, Mr. Grubenbacher. Any meetings or any executive sessions or anything in the horizon, Frank?
Not for me, I think at some point, Dr. Pace may have one, one on labor, I don't have any now.
So then it brings us to superintendent's update?
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the board, just a couple of things quickly. We do have an insurance workshop before our meeting on May the nineteenth. And that will be a great opportunity for us to provide an update on operation at the Health Center, our trust fund, and then the exciting news that we hope to be able to bring to you about contracts moving forward for our medical benefit services. Also wanted to share with the board, I think you, you all know that I am working with Mr. Fisher and the county manager and also Mr. Sturgeon and Mr. Steicherwald, the two city managers to facilitate the Osceola Back to Business Task Force, trying to get some input from our community on the types of needs that are out there to help our businesses, our restaurants kind of come back to life and, and get our economy moving again. I have decided, and I've been sharing this with you as a board, but wanted to also share it with the public, that I think we're gonna try a similar approach on the local level with an Osceola Back to School Task Force that aligns very nicely with the recommendations that Mr. Weisire and the FSBA group sent to the, sent to the Commissioner of Education and the Governor today and that we need some global state guidelines, but we're also gonna need to look at some local operational things that we know that we need to do. Because out of our conversation last Friday with the Osceola Back to Business Task Force, I was really struck by how very, very important it's gonna be for all of us to develop a strong sense of psychological safety for both our consumers in our businesses and restaurants, but also for the consumers of our school system, our parents, our students, and of course, our staff so that they know the types of safety protocols and procedures we're gonna put into place to help assure a level of safety as COVID-19 continues. I also just wanted to share with the board, I would like to request that we consider an all-goals strategic plan workshop on June the second. We currently have a budget workshop that afternoon at three, I sent that information to you in the board update from Friday, but we will want to come back to you and report where we are with our strategic plan, just like we always do annually in January and again in June. We won't have the same level of student outcome data that we sometimes have, but we'll continue to share with you what's happening with our students, with our student attendance, both in digital learning and throughout the year, and then also plans that we're putting into place for summer learning and a baseline assessment protocol that we would put into place in August to see where our kids are and where we might need to provide some extra supports to help them catch up. So we could either do that in the morning early and take a break midday, we could do it, say, from ten to twelve. It really is the pleasure of the board. I do know that trying to meet from like one to five thirty and beyond is typically overwhelming, and it's such important information when we're talking about our strategic plan and also our budget that I'd like to make sure that we had some good time and attention to that, so I'll take your feedback there. One last thing, in order to prepare for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, which we are still continuing to do, we also need to bring to you as a board our student code of conduct. So we're gonna implement one more rulemaking cycle. We kind of pushed that off due to the COVID-19 virus, but some of that stuff can't wait because it's required in statute, and I know there's some other things that the board had wanted to consider. So I will be sending an email to each of you individually, probably tonight, if not first thing in the morning, with the information that would be covered in that cycle. I'll encourage you to follow up either with Mr. Boyd or with me individually with any concerns that you have. We'll first present it again to you at our first meeting in June and then bring it back for a public hearing on June the sixteenth, that gives us plenty of time to publish that information to our community. So with that, I just would like some feedback about when you might want to do your strategic plan workshop on the day of June the second.
Very well, you want us to discuss the June the second because for me, I, I will make it work, I mean, the, the, I don't know how the courts are gonna open up or what kind of stampede we're gonna have, and that's the only thing that's holding me, but I'd rather just schedule it and, and say we do it from ten to twelve on the second and then see what happens. Board, please chime in, do it by hand. You good with that, Mr. Weisire?
Yeah, whatever you want, Chairman.
To this, Mr. Booth, how feels you?
I'm good.
Mr. Thacker?
Good.
All right, and Ms. Castillo, just going backwards on the numbers.
No problem, tentatively good. I know that as most businesses are ramping up, I may have some more work that I may have to take care of, but I think that at this point I will be okay. I'll let you guys know if there's any conflict.
Please do, because I'm, you know, there's, there's, I'm hoping that there's wiggle time in that morning shift, you know. I certainly, I certainly may need that as well. All right, so.
Thank you very much, Chairman Soto, we'll plan on from ten to twelve on June the second. We'll have our budget workshop at three and then our regular meeting at five thirty, and we'll plan to have some lunch or something like that for the board, so thank you very much.
Oh, if there's gonna be lunch, forget it, we're doing it.
All right, so board, we are coming up on item sixteen, unfinished business. There's always unfinished business, but that doesn't mean that we're gonna have it. So going down the line, number one, anything? No, okay, number two doesn't have anything, number three? Four? Five? So any new business? I'm gonna hand, no, no new business, don't see any hands. Final ever comment? Okay, so the last item that we have is eighteen point oh two, Osceola Back to Work. Ms. Castillo, you wanted to update us on this item, the floor is yours.
I wanted an update from Dr. Pace, and she actually already gave a really good one with regards to how we're prepping up or ramping up for our next school year. Board, I know it's kind of early to start talking about back to school when school is still in session, but I think that under the circumstances, it is really important that we start to strategize how we're going to bring students back in a safe manner. I spoke to Dr. Pace about this already, I'm specifically concerned about transportation and social distancing, and I would like to know if you've already had some of those discussions with your, I guess, your, your task force? Not, it hasn't been formed yet, right? So.
No, we have gotten agreement though from Nemours, our partners at the Nemours Children's Hospital to help gauge, so we will have medical expertise on that. We're also, of course, looking at CDC guidelines, and very much like you said, Ms. Castillo, it's even a little bit early because we don't really know how the virus is gonna, is gonna progress. Right now, things are looking good, but the transportation piece is probably the, the component that scares me the most. But with that group, we would have some principals, some parents, some medical experts in the field as well as some of our district logistical operational staff and try to look at what guidelines the state might provide, what guidelines are coming out of the federal government, and then decide on a local level what makes sense for us. But it would be meeting over the course of the next probably six to eight weeks as we continue to track this data to try to decide what makes the most sense for our students and staff in August. We hope.
I also know that there was some recommendations that we should have already received from FSBA. Mr. Weisire, did you have any comments on some of those recommendations as well?
Sure, I'm glad to, if the board hasn't already, thank you, first of all, Ms. Castillo. If the board hasn't already had a chance to see them because we did just send them out within the last couple of hours. But your executive team at the Florida School Board Association worked over the weekend to draft these. We also sent them out to our board of directors for review and comment, and then ultimately submitted them today to the Governor's Office and the Commissioner's Office. I won't read them in detail, but obviously, we start off talking about the first priority being the health and safety of students, employees and our community. There's a series of recommendations within that area. We talked about making sure that the state is thinking about addressing the mental health needs of our students and our staff as we come back into school. Talk about collaboration that must occur at both the local and the state level, recognizing what our constitutional rights are under Article Nine of the Florida Constitution is duly elected school board members to oversee the operations or the oversight and governance of districts within our respective communities. And also providing flexibility to provide the safest and best environments for all students and lays out a series of recommendations within that subcategory. And then there's a conclusion, it was also accompanied a cover letter that we had prepared for the Governor and the Commissioner. There are other organizations, as you probably know, across the state that have been putting together recommendations from their particular area of expertise. So on behalf of our board and all school boards across the state of Florida, it was our pleasure to put those together and submit those for consideration and review by the Commissioner and the Governor.
Thank you.
And then Chair, I can just take a personal point of privilege.
Absolutely.
I failed to say something at the beginning of this meeting when we had positive comments, and I don't want to miss the opportunity to recognize and say thank you to Sarah Graber. Each week, as you know, I host a statewide call with school boards across the state to talk about how they're dealing with COVID-19 and the impacts in their respective community. And this past week, we had four different CFO rock stars from across the state on that call speaking to school boards from across the state of Florida, and Sarah Graber was one of the subject matter experts. And Sarah Graber was one of those subject matter experts, and as she always does, she performed exceptionally well, provided great content and information for school board members to take into consideration as they're thinking about how to prepare, not just as we wrap up the current school year, but as we transition into the summer. We think about the impacts on sales tax revenue, impact collections, uh, ad valorem taxes, which I don't expect any real change in, so on and so forth, but also planning for next year with regard to budget allocations, um, enrollment models, FTE staffing, so on and so forth. And so I just want to express my personal gratitude, uh, to Sarah for her time and effort, but also, uh, take an opportunity to brag on her to our entire school board. I know she doesn't need it, because you guys all feel the same way about her as I do, but once again, uh, somebody else from Osceola County, much like we've seen time and time again from our various departments stepped up to serve at a higher level and, and represented our district exceptionally well.
Thank you, Mr. Weisire. So I'm just waiting for our hand to rise, I don't see any hands. Board, I know we're having a lot of fun, and I know you want to stay here for another hour, but it really isn't a lot of any business left for us. So I'm gonna go ahead and with your permission, call this meeting adjourned and, um, be safe out there.
You, Chairman.